It's seven o'clock, Tuesday, April twenty-third. Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood Zoning Board of Adjustment Regular Meeting to be held at nine-ten South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. Called to order the action items, we're going to administer the office, the oath of office to new alternate member Jim Gibson. Aubrey, would you please do that? Jim, if you'll stand?
If you want to stand there and just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jim Gibson.
I, Jim Gibson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of alternate board member.
Of alternate board member.
Of the zoning board of adjustment.
Of the zoning board of adjustment.
For the city of Friendswood.
For the city of Friendswood.
Of the state of Texas.
The state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances of the city.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, communications from the public, is there anyone here that would like to speak? I see one person that's not part of the board.
Good though.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Not seeing anyone, we'll move on. Discussion and possible action on the, consider the approval of the minutes of the zoning board of adjustment from our regular meeting held August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-third. That's how often we meet, so. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
I second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right, unanimous. Motion passes? All right. Consider a recommendation to City Council recommending resolution ninety-two dash two zoning board of adjustment rules of procedure. Aubrey, would you provide the staff summary?
Yeah. All right. So, the last rules of procedure that were for this board were from nineteen ninety-two, so this is a complete rewrite, just updating and refreshing the rules with current laws, which for ZBOA hasn't really changed a whole lot. So this is just governing, like, you know, just clarifications on how the board conducts itself, the, like, the requirements for variances and different things are still going to be in the zoning ordinance. This is just our rules for, like, the background. So, just an overview of the zoning board of adjustment, it's five regular members and four alternate members. It is a quasi judicial board, which literally means court-like, so our proceedings are, like, court where we hear from applicants, and then you can have, you know, opposition, an applicant might be represented by an attorney or an agent, and then the board considers facts that you hear in the hearing to then render a decision. So those are a little bit different than, for instance, planning and zoning and even city council. So your primary function is to hear and decide requests for special exceptions, variances, and appeals, and there are criteria for those that are more detailed. I'm not going to read the rules word for word, we're doing a high-level summary. As far as general meeting rules, meetings are open to the public. A quorum constitute four or more members, and affirmative vote of four or more members is required to take action if you're acting as the board. So that's the reason why we have four alternates, because it's important that we always have five members. There are just staff appointments for the Director of Community Development, the City Attorney, Building Official, and the Secretary, which is currently the Assistant Planner. And then amend, rules may be amended by the board with council approval, and that does match what's in Chapter Two of the Friendswood Code of Ordinances. So types of meetings, our regular meetings are fourth Tuesday of each month. If a holiday falls during that same week, the meeting would be scheduled for the third Tuesday of the month. So this is a major, one of the major changes, the reason why we're meeting tonight is to change our meeting times from seven PM to six PM. So if anybody has any major objection to that, let us know. Council has moved their meetings earlier, they start between four-thirty and six. Historically, they were seven o'clock as well, and then planning and zoning used to be seven o'clock and they're six o'clock now, so just trying to make everything consistent across the board for public meetings. Special meetings may be called by the Secretary at the request of the presiding officer or two members of the board. And the notice of the meetings, it's seventy-two hours in advance according to Texas Open Meetings Act, and they're posted on the city's official bulletin board and on the website as a courtesy. So just the presiding officer and duties, the chair or vice-chair in the absence of the chair is the presiding officer. In the absent of both, the board elects a temporary presiding officer just for that meeting, and a quorum is required to make that decision. The chair or presiding officer selects alternate members to fill the seats of absent regular members. They preserve the order of the meeting and call questions and ensure clearly indicated votes. And code of conduct, the rules just have details on how board members, administrative staff, citizens, and then just in general code of conduct. Communication devices are not allowed during meetings. As far as the order of business for ZBOA, the submission deadline is noon the first Tuesday of each month. If a meeting is moved up because of a holiday, the submission deadline is also moved up one week, which we post submittal and meeting schedules usually in November or December for the following year, so we have that schedule posted throughout the year for.
Aubrey, I had a question about that.
Okay.
Three weeks, what's, what's the reasoning behind it? Because I've heard in the past that people complained that they had to wait so long to come before to get a ruling and all of that, and I'm just curious, why three weeks and not two weeks? I thought two weeks was kind of standard, but.
So it gives us time to review the application and put a staff report together and to notify, because y'all don't meet all the time, it gives us, you know, when, if we get an application, we send y'all an email and say, hey, we're meeting this month.
Yeah.
But the main thing is just to get the staff report together, and we don't have any notice requirements for this one, so, as far as, like, sending out property owner notices, so.
So have we, have we had any issues in the past with people complaining or wanting, wondering why it takes so long? I don't know.
I haven't heard anything. I've been here for seventeen years and it's just been that way, but, not that we can't change it.
Okay, I'm curious.
It's a good question. Agenda items are approved by the director, the building official, presiding officer, or two board members. And then public comments during a meeting, public, if you're speaking on an item, you submit a card to speak, you have a three-minute time, actually, no, this is just for general public comments. Submit a card to speak, have a three-minute time limit, and no electronic media is allowed. If they want to provide copies to the board, it's eight paper copies. So the agenda order, we would call the meeting to order, we'll have public comment, approval of minutes, and then if we had action items, would be variances to the zoning ordinance, special exceptions to the zoning ordinance, appeals, variances to the sign code, and then a staff report and adjournment. So hearing and hearings and decisions, time limitations, so if there is an application for a variance or a special exception, the applicant is given a reasonable period of time to present testimony and evidence. Presentations on behalf of an applicant is three minutes, and presentations on behalf of opponents is three minutes, and then the applicant would have a total of two minutes to rebut the arguments of the opponents. For appeals and other decisions, both parties of an appeal get a reasonable period of time to present testimony and evidence. Each party has a total of three minutes for closing arguments. And by majority of the vote or upon ruling of the chair, time limits can be equitably extended, and after the public hearing is closed, no further public comments can be accepted at that time, unless requested by the chair. Which we'll talk about that here in a little bit here. So as far as hearings, like I said, applicants may be represented by legal counsel or an agent. And then the rules detail the order of the hearing for variances and special exceptions, including the presiding officer would do the oath of offi, or swear in everyone who's going to speak, and it has a specific order for those types of hearings. And then there's an order of hearing for appeals and other decisions. And a decision of the board is a final determination unless the decision is reversed by a court of competent jurisdiction or the relevant code provisions are amended by the city council. So board decisions, so board deliberation, so after the public hearing closes on an individual item, the chair can call for questions from the board. You can ask the applicant, you can ask staff, witnesses, and interested parties in order to find out relevant facts, circumstances, and conditions affecting the matter, and then call for questions from other board members or the responsible city official. During deliberation, the board may call on any party to the proceeding, may call on any party to the proceeding or witness for further questioning. And then, so disposition, the board shall dismiss a matter if the board finds that it was improperly filed. The board may deny any matter in which the application, applicant has failed to appear, provided, you would go ahead and hear public comment if anybody showed up for the public hearing. And then a written decision, the board shall issue a written decision after the hearing, and your written decision has to include the ultimate disposition of a case, any conditions imposed on a variance or special exception, the board's interpretation of the regulation or land use category at issue in the appeal if applicable, and the board's findings. And unless time limits are established by law, the board shall decide the appeal within a reasonable period of time. And reconsidering items, the board can reconsider an item one time. The request has to be filed, or can be filed by any person having original standing in the matter. It has to be filed within ten days after the board's decision, and it must state how the board erred in its determination, why the action should be reconsidered, and be supported by new or clarified evidence. And then the board would review the request and determine whether or not to reconsider the matter because of an error. And then during that reconsideration, a member may move to reconsider regardless of the member's vote on the original appeal, so if you change your mind, that's fine. And then the affirmative vote of four members of the board shall be necessary to reconsider, which shall then be heard immediately following the board's decision, so it'd be like a new hearing if you vote to reconsider. And then failure of a motion to reconsider shall constitute final action on the matter. Lastly, is ex parte communications are prohibited? Again, this is a judicial body, or quasi judicial body, so the, the board has the authority to decide the rights of individual parties, subject to the requirements of state law and the Friendswood City Code. So no one other than staff may contact a member of the board outside of a public hearing regarding a matter that is pending or may in the future be pending before the board. All communications to the board outside of a public hearing should be directed to the board's secretary or staff, so no outside communications with applicants or neighbors or friends or anything like that. All of the facts that you consider to make a decision should be the ones that you hear here in this room. So limitations on outside investigations, you, members shall not individually investigate cases before the board, so no site visits. Again, it's just the facts that are presented here in the meeting. And disqualification, so a board that, remember, member that receives material information regarding a case that is not made available to other members of the board is disqualified from participating in the case unless the member publicly discloses the information and its source at the earliest reasonable opportunity. A board member may disqualify him or himself if an applicant, interested party, or agent has sought to influence the member's vote other than in a public hearing or through documents made available at the public hearing. So I think that's all pretty straightforward, and any questions, comments, or recommendations?
Yeah, I have a question, because when I got on it, the previous members said there's several instances or times that they needed to and felt it was needed for them to, to have a better understanding of what was going on, that they did a drive-by. You know, somebody's requesting a variance or something around an easement or something, and all we would see here are pictures, but if you can publicly drive by it on the street, that you get a better understanding, and that's what I've always worked with. I, you know, I'm not interested in talking to anyone, the neighbors or anyone, but just driving by and seeing so I have a better understanding of what they're trying to convey through pictures and that. And I know that we use, we can only use the evidence presented here, but you may have a different understanding of things if you see something from a different perspective in that, you know, trees aren't conveyed in the right place or a roadway or something in the pictures, but you drive down the street and you see it and that, and I'm just wondering about that.
Right. So you sit like a judge, so a judge would not go out and look at, do a site visit to all the different places before they hear a case, so that's kind of how you all sit. It's a responsibility of the city and the applicant to bring evidence to you to present the case. So in that respect, no, you really should not go out and try to gather information, because even though you say you're not going to consider it, you will consider it. You've got that in the back of your mind and everything else, so we discourage you going out and trying to gather any evidence prior to the hearing, so you really need to rely on what's presented in, in chambers when you make your decision.
Okay.
If, I got a question also.
Okay.
If, if we're dealing with an area which we are not clear on something on a photograph or drawing, can we request that that be brought up in some kind of a 3D Google thing to look at a property as it is, or land or something? I mean, with, of course, you know, everybody's approval. Sometimes, you know, the 3D is easier to understand than the 2D. I'm just asking.
I, I think all the, if, if the applicant submitted that as part of their evidence, then you could consider it, or if the city presented it as part of, you know, our evidence, but I don't think you could request anything, like, could you pull up, like, Street View during a meeting, or, you really need to decide, make your decision based on the evidence presented.
Okay. Are we allowed to also say that we don't have enough evidence? And then request more for later? I mean, I'm just asking you, I mean, I work in, in engineering, everything now is 3D, and there's these cameras we take out to the plants, and everything's done with point clouds in real time now, and, and I'm just asking if, if the city's there yet at all.
So I think just like a court, that a case could be continued, you do have some kind of restraints on when you have to render a decision, so there would probably have to be a special meeting if you didn't have enough evidence or requested additional information, but really, you need to try to make the decisions based on what is here.
Yes.
I don't think that they, that, there's a burden of proof, and they've got to make that burden, if it's not made, then, then the decision needs to be whatever it may be at that point.
I'm understanding, okay. Thanks for the clarification. Thank you.
So, so if we feel that we need more information or something, we could put the decision off to another meeting and tell both parties that you need to do something else, or we need a better.
Really shouldn't, because they have their day in court and the day is when it comes, and so both parties need to be ready to present, and a decision should be made based on what's presented. So really, that should, everything should be decided based on the evidence presented, not asking for additional information or anything of that nature.
Okay, so their, their effort, they've had plenty of time to do, do effort to get their information to us.
That's correct, and they need to present whatever they need to present, or we need to present whatever we need to present in order to support the decision.
Fair enough.
And I think that kind of supports the three-week lead time on an application, like, they, they have plenty of time to gather, you know, information and evidence, you know, as do we, so.
So on, on a reconsideration, how, how long of a time period, I see that it's, they need to file their reconsideration or appeal, or however you want to call it, within ten days, and then how long do we have before we have to meet again and to determine that? Is it put off till the next regular meeting, or do we have ten days to do it, or?
I think, let's see.
So unless a special meeting's called, it would just be held at your regular, next regular meeting?
Yeah, which, if, if we have one meeting scheduled per month and they have to submit the request ten days following, then the next month meeting should be a reasonable timeframe.
Okay, so they, they would have to request a special meeting?
No.
We would not be obligated to a special meeting? We could say the next regular meeting?
Yes.
But we're not saying that they couldn't request a special meeting.
So your rules prescribe who can request a public, a special meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And that's the chair, or two, two members could also request, because we want to avoid any quorum issues.
Yeah.
So that can be requested with special meeting. I think what we're trying to say is that we believe that there's sufficient time between after a decision is made, when they have to file their appeal, and at the next meeting, there should be sufficient time in order for everything to be put together and be ready for your meeting.
Okay, but they do have the ability to request a special meeting?
No, sir.
No.
That's not in their purview. That's in the chair's purview and two, two members' purview.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the director's purview, I believe.
The only thing, an applicant can submit a request to reconsider an item.
Mm-hmm, okay. And if, if they request, and sorry, Glenn, but if, if they request that we have, have a meeting sooner due to expediency and maybe timelines they're under, we're not obligated to do that, but would y'all ask us to do that if they made a special request, or is that just a hard no?
Well, we could, right?
We would just put it on the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, so it is a hard no if they ask?
They, yeah, they, yeah, they can't make that request.
Okay. I do have a question about conferring. Do, are there any times when we would have an executive session on any of these discussions that should not be in public?
So the Open Meetings Act requires that all meetings be open except for a few limited exceptions. One of those is a discussion with your attorney, so if you had some legal issues that you needed to, so that would be something that you could go into executive session, but your deliberation would be in public.
Okay.
So if y'all don't have any other questions, we just need a motion and a second and a vote, and then this would go to city council for their next meeting coming up here in May.
And the motion should be for the amended rules that are in, at their, your place?
Yes, and actually, I forgot to mention, we, from the original version that was sent out to you, I think we have the red lines for you tonight, there were three amendments that we caught in the meantime, so in section two-point-one-two, council approval is required to amend the, amend the rules, and so we added council approval to that item. Section five-point-two, we changed city manager to Director of Community Development, and then on section seven-point-oh-three, we just moved the oath up one item to be in order before anybody starts presenting information during the hearing.
I make a motion to approve the amended procedures for the zoning board of appeals.
I second the motion.
All right, hearing and motion and a second, shall we vote on this? Everybody for it, raise your hand. Seeing as no one's against it, it's unanimous, passes. From here, I don't see Joe or Steve here. Brian or Becky, Karen, do you all have anything you'd like to say or share, or anything?
No, sir, not for me.
Okay, well, before we adjourn, I would like to ask, we, at one point, we were going to go over some, and this may be what y'all had in mind, but some, some things about us learning a little bit more about how to, to listen and glean the information from the people, from the applicants and, and everyone in that, so we have a better understanding of some of the, the material presented, because at times, I mean, people are a little frustrated about things and they're nervous and that, I know I get nervous up here at times and that, and I was just wondering if, if we had anything like that in the works.
We do have some, like, standard training materials. Without getting into any case specifics, y'all can, you know, ask questions of staff if you, if there's a term that you don't understand or you want to know how it applies, then we can go over that. It's, just gets a little tricky when it gets into the specifics of a case, we can't discuss it until they bring it to you, because what they bring to you, that, if the burden is on them, if they do a good job and they convince you, then, then they do, and if they don't, then they don't. Same thing on the city side, if we don't do a good job, then we're, unfortunately, it just, it kind of is what it is.
All right.
So we're not, we should not encourage any other, anything else than they've presented? We should, is that?
Yes, what they give you, that is all you get to consider, and if they do a good job, great, and if they don't do a good job, then it is unfortunate.
So we're not pulling more information out of them, it's what they present in the paperwork and how they talk about it.
Correct, and.
Ask questions of them.
We do have, yeah, we do have the ability to answer, or ask questions of them.
And staff tries.
Yeah.
Pretty hard to, you know, help people work through items before it gets to y'all. We generally try and find a solution. Once it gets to y'all, you know, things like after Hurricane Harvey where we were having repetitive incidents, because it was things that our ordinance didn't cover. Those, obviously, we help as much as we can, and we change our ordinance as when necessary. We've had a couple of them where people, they are individual, they're specific to their case, and so it's not a need for the city, it's a need for them and their specific circumstance, and so it, the burden is on them to present that case.
All right.
State law has changed a little bit too, and the considerations that you can take, that you can use to. Uh, state law has changed a little bit too, and the considerations that you can, um, take it, that you can use to grant variances. Um, it used to be no financial hardship, and now there's some criteria that, um, and if, the next time we have a meeting, obviously, we'll refresh you on, you know, whatever, if it's a variance or a special exception, I mean, you'll be updated on, you know, what you can consider. And, you know, we usually do the finding sheet, so it's kind of a, a checklist. You know, if you can check all these, then, you know, you can approve it, um, so those kinda things.
Okay, do you happen to know off the top of your head what the, what section of the law it is if somebody wanted to read it? I mean, I, I'd have to do a, a Google search and-
It's chapter two eleven.
Two eleven of Local Government Code, so you can just get, Google Texas Local Government Code. Oh, no. Yeah.
Okay, uh, does anyone have anything else, any other topics or questions to have for anyone? Well, uh, it's, uh, time to get out of here of adjournment. Do I have a motion to approve of adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank y'all, everyone from coming out.